Clay is our moderator. She will take it from here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Leslie, I'll let you have it.
Oh, okay. And I am a little embarrassed. We're going to have two of the candidates for the school board to speak. Um, and Blake Willoughby is one of them. He's here. Yeah. And the other one is, uh, who's the other one?
Suzette Waters.
Suzette, oh Suzette, right above it on my screen. All right. All right. Suzette Waters and Blake Willoughby are running for the school board, which has, two openings and several different people running. We're going to have two different meetings uh, with different people who are uh, running for the school board. But today we are having these two people. What I will do is each one of the candidates will have five minutes to give an introductory spiel, introduce yourself, whatever you want to say that's really important to you, or uh, do whatever. And then after that, we'll go to everybody for questions. Um, and I might depend on Kathy to look for people who are raising their hand. Um, if you, we can't see you, you're grayed out. You can use a little image with a hand, but it's, I'll let Kathy deal with that. Um, but after the questions, what, um, and then, I'm sorry, this is getting clear, get something cleared up there. Um, people can ask a question. Do not ask more than, say, thirty seconds. Because I want to hear from the candidates. We all want to hear from the candidate, not from us. I've heard enough from us. Each candidate has two minutes to respond to the question. And um, what I will do is I have this. This will tell you, you have thirty seconds left. You have ten seconds left, and then stop. And um, I will alternate who goes first each time. And if I mess up, you all remind me. Okay? So uh, we go alphabetically and Blake, you are on unmute.
Thank you so much, Leslie. Uh, thank you to everyone here and to Mule Skinner's uh, executive team for holding this space for us and allowing us to come. It's really great to be back and just talk to y'all. My name is Blake Willoughby. I currently serve on the Columbia Public School Board and I am running for reelection for another term. Um, oh, I was first elected in April of twenty nineteen and I appreciate all the support that many of folks in and assume right here gave during that time. We've had an interesting three years. Um, within my first year of being on the board, we had to begin responding to COVID. And since then, we have been basically responding to COVID and schooling and how do we manage through this trauma point in our lives? And I, I call it a trauma point because it truly is. It's been a trauma point constantly for our globe, for our nation, and even here for our community. And we've seen how we have all responded in a variety of different ways. And I do think that there is a space for us to think about this as we continue on to the next three years. And thinking about serving for another three years, how do we then respond to that trauma and also work with our community to bring us back together? And I do think that it comes into a space of looking at the decision-making we have on the board, looking at how our leaders are operating and constantly asking the question of how does this decision that we're making help us heal? How does a decision help our educational spaces heal to become more welcoming to our community, more welcoming to our students, and more welcoming to staff? How do, how does our leadership on the board and within the district facilitate that healing and operate in that avenue? And so to me, where that really looks at is coming at from three major areas of what I think are the focuses for what we need to look at for the next three years, and that being quality, equitable, educational environments. And what do I mean by that? What I mean is that this is really looking at academics and looking at academics from the lens of addressing the opportunity gap, also known as the achievement gap. And addressing where there might be COVID learning loss when it comes to retention of knowledge just due to the variety of impacts COVID had, has had on the schooling environment, but also on the individual child's um, living situations. Beyond just that, looking at facilitating a healthy work environment. We have seen just due to the trauma of how COVID has impacted schools, our teachers and our staff are working far beyond and are far harder than what they have ever done. They were already working beyond and harder than what they were needing to, just because they care so much. But even now, the stressors of what that has added to it has made it really difficult. And beyond that, we also have a lot of tension points from the political atmosphere on top of our staff. And so that's causing a drain. And so really working with our district leaders, our building leaders and our staff on seeing what we can do in making decisions that are going to be healing that work environment and stabilizing it to not only make it healthy for our staff that we have currently, but to, to help with our retention of staff as well as our introduction of new staff members and enticing folks to come over to Columbia Public Schools. And then lastly, a continuation of things that I've been focusing on over the last three years, really looking at our physical structures of our buildings. So continuing to work on healing our physical structures to be more inclusive, so that anybody can go into our buildings and not have physical barriers. And so that's why we see those ADA bond language changes to focus in on that and put bond money towards that. And then lastly, the biggest thing of it is really looking at our Columbia area career center. We have a huge opportunity here to renovate it and bring it up to look like a twenty-first century career center that it should be. Because we have some amazing work that's happening in that building that our, our staff are teaching, our students, our students are doing. And yet that building is just not designed to be that inclusive exhibit-style space for our community to see the wonderful work that is happening in our career center. And so really wanting to see that through, seeing that become our career center, becoming a, a centralizing space and potentially being that, one of those larger projects of how do we heal in making that a space for the community to engage with public schools again? And it being a very interesting space. So I'm really looking forward to answering questions, talking more and sharing around the things that we have accomplished in the last three years. And so once again, thank y'all for having us and I will pass it on over to Suzette.
Okay, um, all right. Ms. Waters, it is your turn. Unmute and let us hear what you have to say.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for having me, Mule Skinners. Um, I am excited to be running for school board. Um, I have lived in Columbia for thirty-four years. I grew up here since nineteen eighty-three and I went to Columbia Public Schools. My children have gone to Columbia Public Schools. I have a recent Hickman graduate and a son that is a sophomore at Hickman right now. And my husband and I have been married for twenty-two years and this is our community. So um, I am a serial volunteer and I have always been very active in all of my children's school buildings as a room parent, as a teacher appreciation, worker, concessions worker, event planner, you name it. Um, volunteering has always been important to me. Um, and so this is kind of a continuation of my passion for volunteering. I've personally feel that volunteering makes the world go round. And um, the, it's important to me to do that in this space, in this community, because these schools are precious to me. I believe that public school is the best way for us to educate all the children in our community. And in order for us to have a community that continues to grow, that continues to thrive, we must have successful public schools. So I am all in, committed to helping that continue, to um, putting my energy towards addressing some of the issues that we face. Um, I, I am aware that there are some concerns with Columbia Public Schools. We've had some learning loss. We have some turnover. We have staff shortages. But none of these things are um, things that would cause us to need to just burn the place down and start over. These are, these are workable problems. These are things that with enough effort and with enough conversations out in the community and involving all of us, we can get this work done. So um, one of the things that I would like to do if I'm elected, probably the top thing is to support our teachers. I feel like the, you know, if public school is the foundation of our community, then teachers are the cornerstone. And they have done an amazing job of pivoting throughout this pandemic, having to go all virtual, hybrid, in-seat, back and forth, masking, not masking, staff shortages, no subs, and they, they need our support as a community and as parents and as voters to elect people that are going to keep their work environment top of mind. Um, and encourage policies that will respect them as professionals and trust their competence. Um, and that's something that's important to me. Um, student achievement is also very important to me. I have two children that have taken advantage of the gifted program and honors and AP classes. And they have um, had wonderful experiences at the high school level for sure with classes. Um, I think there could be some more expansion of challenge opportunities at the middle school level. And I've been working on that as a parent, um, advocate for many years. Um, that said, I also understand that we have a wide continuum of opportunity and ability within our district. And we have many students that need extra attention, catching up, getting onto grade level, making progress. But we can do both of those things. Those are not mutually exclusive goals. We can address the needs of all of our students. And then lastly, I'm running because I feel strongly about public school, about supporting public school as an institution. And I would like to be a person that can withstand some of the storm brewing from our political communities and maybe bring some softness to tension that has cropped up around education in general. Um, I'm, I think I'm a pretty good listener and I have made a lot of relationships over town, all over town, and I would like to use those relationships to, to strengthen the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, now we're ready for questions and I should add that reporters are allowed to ask questions as well as everybody else, but I will leave it up to Kathy to recognize people. And for those who are asking questions, I will put up the ten-second warning for you. Okay. Questions?
Let me ask everyone to use the hand icon because I cannot see all the faces.
Yeah, I don't see very many of the faces and um, as a matter of fact, I don't see everybody on the same screen. I have to move over.
I, I don't see any hands up, so let me ask a question. And that is, uh, what, uh, I, I'd like both Blake and Suzette to address this. What is your position on the school bond issue that will be on the ballot?
Okay, and we'll start with Suzette.
I am in support of the bond measure. We absolutely need the money. We have many, many old buildings that need attention. And honestly, about half of the bond is going to be spent building a new elementary school. So you know, things, eighty million dollars is, you know, more than most of us have lying around the house, but it's going to go quickly. And we absolutely need it. Um, I like to tell people that I have lived, I have benefited from bond issues passing. When I was a seventh grader, I believe, at Jeff Junior School, I had Spanish on the third floor uh, the last period of the day, and those afternoons were hot. So thanks to the bond issues that have been passed earl, in earlier decades, Jeff Junior now has not only air conditioning, but an elevator and all of these improvements that are made to our buildings are necessary to keep them in good shape and to make them accessible for all of our students.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Mr. Willoughby?
Yes, I am in support of this no tax increase bond. And part of why I really support it is because this is going to be a bond that we issue out for four years. Uh, and so we'll do an issuance uh, right after, if it gets approved, for forty million of it. And then two years later, we'll do another issuance of forty million there. And so this is us coming to our community saying, we would like a long-term investment and we would ask you to give us that investment so that we can build the, a new elementary school on property that we already own, as well as look at building another elementary school and acquiring land for that. The other part that we have added into our bond, really looking at the career center, and as I earlier talked about, reinvigorating the building, bringing it up to date so that we can offer and supply great programming to our students. And one of the very unique opportunities and the reason why we added this into the bond is because there's been conversations at the state level that the governor's going to want to be throwing in some money towards career and technical education. And so one way for us to be able to get some of that money is if we already have community dollars going towards this investment. Those, if it, if there's a matching requirement, or if it's a space of showing enticement, it is that kind of invigorating space to say, we're already going to be doing this and this will add into our students' experience. Beyond just that, it's a continuation of the language that I helped get added into our bond language and tenure plan around bringing in uh, ADA excellence to our physical structures. And so a continuing of a two million dollar investment in updating our physical buildings to be in, not just ADA compliant, but to be eighty, truly ADA accessible to our students and our community members.
Okay, thank you. Um.
Alice, as I hand up?
Alice, okay.
I'm muting. Thank you. Um, so my question, um, it relates to COVID and masking. Um, in Boone County, since the beginning of COVID, we've had forty thousand recorded cases. Of those through the end of January of this year, there have been twelve thousand cases and through, in January alone. Um, of course, we all know this is due to Omicron, which is still circulating. Um, the, I live next door to two teachers on either side of me, an elementary teacher and a junior high teacher. They were so relieved when Dr. Um, Yearling um, reinstated the mandate on a temporary basis, given the circumstances now. And I know that's through today, but there was a possibility of extending it through the eighteenth. So perhaps you could talk about this issue some. And I know this is very trying times and I thank you Blake for your service and I look forward to yours Suzette.
Okay, we started last question with Ms. Waters. Okay, we'll start this one with Mr. Willoughby.
Um, Alice, I just want to make sure, is, is, is there a specific question or just in general on like where our thoughts are?
Where, where are we at with possibly, and what would be the procedure for extending it through the eighteen?
No, yes, please.
Or decision or an administrator decision?
So the board has already made the decision to give that power to a superintendent. So that was an amendment change that I added into our motion back when we met early uh, for our work session this month or in January. And the reason why I saw that to be very important was looking at the trends that were happening in the UK as well as in New York and California with where their peaks were at with the Omicron variant spreading and where it kind of took a month for them to finally start seeing a decline, but there's still being high amounts of cases. So where we hit our space, where we are hitting kind of our peak, it made sense to give that power to our superintendent to then be able to extend it to February eighteenth. Um, and so that's why I motioned, I made that amendment change and that passed. So it is up to the administration on making the decision for that additional two-week extension, take that opportunity. They're in conversation with local and state health professionals as well as looking at internal data and what we're, where we're at. I think one of the things that's going to be really impacting it is we haven't been in school this week because of the snow. Um, and so I think that we, we might be in a space to where there's a lot of questioning on what is the spread of, what, what is the true case numbers of our students right now, since we really haven't been in the building due to the snow.
Thank you.
Are you done? Okay, Ms. Waters?
Um, well, Blake kind of answered the question about the procedural part of that. I was at that work session and I saw that unfold and I appreciated uh, Blake's contribution to enabling the superintendent to extend that mandate if he felt it was necessary. Um, I've, I talked to Dr. Yearwood this week and I know he's talking with um, a university researcher that's been looking at the wastewater in town, just to kind of monitor what levels are doing in town. Um, as a, just as a point of general comment, I um, I'm sure you would like to know, like, am I, am I for or against masking in general? And the answer is, I've always said I am in favor of doing any mitigation strategy that is going to allow our children to remain in seat um, and to keep our staff levels where they need to be. So it, to me, it is not as relevant, how many cases do we have um, in each building or in town? It's, do we have enough teachers that can be in the building teaching our kids? Um, even if we had plenty of subs, that's, you know, in some cases that gets to be just a warm body. If, there's not learning happening. So we need to do what it takes to keep our teachers in the building doing their jobs. Um, I, I very, very much hope that the mask discussion winds down soon because it has distracted all of us from the, the business of learning. Um, but it's important. So yeah, as long as we need to keep doing that, then that's what we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Who are you calling on next?
And Mari, Mari has her hands up?
Yeah, well, thank you, Suzette and, and Blake for being here at this forum. Um, as, as an incumbent, city council incumbent who was also running in the, this year, um, I'm, I'm very sensitive to this issue of the coarseness of the political discussion uh, in, in public meetings. And uh, and Suzette mentioned a little bit of this in terms of approaching this with a bit of softness. How do you, how would you approach the meeting decorum, uh, given the, the, the history here of, of having some of our state representatives uh, attend some of your meetings and so on, uh, in terms of, uh, in terms of how you would deal with meeting decorum? Thank you.
Okay, and we started last time with Mr. Willoughby. We'll start this time with Ms. Waters. Everybody keeps moving. I don't know where you are. Okay, there you are. Okay.
Um, thank you, Mr. Skala for that question. Um, that is something I have spoken about with a lot of different people. Um, I know the board had a consultant come in, I believe it was in December, if that's right, Blake. Um, and discussed, he discussed a few uh, different options the board might have um, in terms of public policy, like how people are able to give public policy. Um, from what I understand, our school district is different than many others. When it comes to public policy, we have so many opportunities for the public to get up and give comment
Interesting.
on different agenda items. Um, and then there's, you know, just open-ended public comment time at the end of the meetings and that has uh, sadly become a little bit of a stage for political, politically motivated comments. Um, I don't think they're always helpful. And, but I also think we need to be very careful about how we change the way we do public comments so as not to appear like we're just not willing to listen at all. But I do think there is, we, we're, I think the board would do well to rethink how those meetings are run so that the focus of the meeting can be on education, on the budget, on projects and contracts instead of um, just, you know, a public throwdown on the latest topic du jour. And I think that would be in the best interest of our community.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mr. Willoughby?
Yes, uh, thank you, Councilmember Skala for that question. Uh, I think this is where being an incumbent, as you shared for yourself as well, is really important to understand where we've been, what are we dealing with now and where we're going. And I highlight that because when I, right before I joined the board, the Columbia Public School Board had forty-eight years of collective board member service at that time. Currently, as I am rerunning, the board only has twenty-three years of collective school board member experience on the board currently. Eleven of those years are held by President Howard Wade. Um, and so that really comes at understanding that space to then, how do we engage? And how do we work with our constituents in that public arena and that public space of public comment during meetings? One of the things that's really difficult about it does come into the fact that, once we open it up, it is a public space and anything can really be said and it's hard, there are so hard, fast lines on what we can do and holding decorum. All that power is vested within the president of the board and so it uh, comes into that, calling into that space to do it. But as Ms. Waters shared, we have had conversations with a parliamentarian who came to give us parliamentarian procedures training as well as talked about this moment. And some of the areas that we have seen changes over the last three years is right when I first joined the board, we used to have what we called general public comment more at the beginning of the meeting. And what we were noticing was that that was lasting around an hour and a half to two hours. And news media were leaving early to make deadlines and weren't getting some of our big, important things that we were discussing. So we moved the general public comment to the end to get, make sure that news media could get our most important pieces the board was voting on, as well as our board is a lot more extensive than other boards to where we have, public comment can be given on every single agenda item before the board votes on it. So it is just a reassessment and working together as a board to reevaluate where our policies stand and how we want to address how public comment gets brought in. Thank you, Leslie.
Okay. This hasn't gone off yet before, so I'm surprised with the noise. Okay, um, another question.
Caleb Hall has his hand up.
Oh, thank you Kathy. Uh, good afternoon. So obviously we have uh, masking and CRT are on the front of everyone's mind. Uh, and maybe you've already answered this question by, in reference to your answer to other questions, but I'm curious, what do you see are the bigger issues in Columbia's public schools that people aren't uh, giving enough attention to?
Okay, Mr. Willoughby, there you are. It's your turn.
Yes, completely. I think one of the biggest things that we aren't discussing a lot about, but I think we all know, as I brought up, is this space of we, our community has dealt with trauma. COVID has caused trauma, not just from how COVID has impacted our lives, but how we have had discourse with staff, how our families are having discourse with staff, and how our students are interacting in our school buildings. And so I would say it, this approach and this framework of thinking about our decision-making and our leadership in a lens of healing is, is a penultimate goal here. And I think is one thing that we as a larger community have to discuss. Because if we aren't all collectively thinking about how do we heal from this, it's going to be harder to really move forward and continue working on all the important things that are there. And so I do think that's an overall umbrella thing that we have to collectively do. The school board can take it on as being examples of it with leadership. We can take it on by having that framework when making decisions and thinking about how does this decision here help with our healing in certain areas? But to have a holistic and collective way of how we, our staff are engaging with our community and our, how our community is engaging with our staff and how our students are engaging in the building, it's going to take all of us to really work on that framework and thinking about it, thinking about how we've moved forward together as a community. I think additionally, our largest thing that we need to address is related to COVID as well, but also related to a larger issue that every district has been dealing with and we've been dealing with for years. And it's our opportunity gap. And I think Dr. Yearwood, that's a part of why I hired him, um, or I didn't hire him solely, but uh, said I would like to hire him is coming from the fact that he has experience in turning around schools that are not doing well and also not doing well on that space of the opportunity gap for our subgroups. Um, and so he has a lot of initiatives that he's been wanting to roll out, but we've been a little bit slow on it because we've been trying to address the social emotional needs of our students as well as the burnout and the stress that's happening to our teachers. But that's the biggest, next biggest issue around uh, the opportunity gap and achievement.
Okay, um, Ms. Waters?
Thanks. So um, in addition to the hot button issues, yes, absolutely, there are bigger, we have bigger fish to fry. Um, one of the most stark things I've noticed in talking with teachers and administrators is we need to address the learning loss that occurred when kids were virtual. Um, it was, it's, I'm, am I getting, can everyone else hear the feedback?
I think it's my clock. I have a grandfather clock.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so um, one of the biggest issues I've Oh, it's, okay, so, um, one of the biggest issues I've uncovered when, in talking with people is learning loss. And I think it's been much more pronounced at the elementary school level. You know, for example, a current second grader has really barely been in school for a semester prior to this year. So they've missed all the kindergarten socialization, they've missed a lot of the first grade. They're not reading on level, very few of them are on level, especially in the title schools. You know, at, at a more affluent school, there might be three out of twenty-two that are not reading on level. At a title school, there might be three out of twenty-two that are reading on level. So that goes back to what Mr. Willoughby was talking about with the opportunity gap. There, there is, there is, was a difference in learning when we were virtual. And that learning loss desperately needs to be addressed. Um, and then another thing that we need to focus a lot of energy on is the mental health crisis that we have. And that is coming into play in behavior issues and absences and really affects students' performance in school for their, for their mental health to be, um, uh, less than it could be. And so working with community partners to address that. And then, um, finance is another, is another one, and I have run out of time to talk about it, so maybe we'll get to that later.
Okay, um, I should point out that at the end, we're going to have five minutes for each of you to, to tie up loose ends, because there will be some. All right, next we have Mr. Willoughby.
Oh, Leslie, I've answered this question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the next question, unless I'm mistaken.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I've been looking at my phone so much.
Uh, David Mallory has a question.
Thank you. I think it's time that we're through with the softball questions, and I've got a tough one for y'all. I think each voter gets two votes. I expect each one of you will be planning to vote for yourself. Could you explain to us who you span to cast your other vote for and why?
All right, now, yeah, Ms. Waters.
Well, obviously, I'm going to say Blake, because he's here. Now, but also because that's true. Um, I have met Blake on several, or Mr. Willoughby, I, I'm not sure what to call you. On several occasions, um, I have found him to be a genuine person that is committed to, uh, doing, putting, pouring his energy into serving our community, and I admire that. Um, I think anyone who is willing to go for round two deserves a lot of respect right now. Um, and I, I think he has long-range goals for Columbia Public Schools that align with my own. Um, and I, I think he has shown himself to be a, a good public servant. So, that's who I'm going to vote for, and myself.
Right, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Willoughby.
Well, I, I kind of have to say Ms. Waters now, she said some wonderful things, so I appreciate that. Um, you know, I, I, yes, I'll, I'll be voting for myself in that very selfish way. Uh, I think also, I will always recommend go and look at everyone's stuff. But what I will say from what I know about my three fellow candidates that are there and the conversations that I have been able to have, um, I think Ms. Waters presents a lot of opportunity and also a lot of experience with Columbia Public Schools. And that's something that we need right now. As I shared earlier, we, currently on the board, we only have twenty-three years of school board experience. And that, that presents a lot of opportunities because we have a lot of new voices and a lot of new minds thinking about these hard decisions and giving direction for the district. But to have that institutional knowledge and that continuity and that historical understanding of Columbia Public Schools is really important. And you only get that good quality of that when you're deeply engaged and you're volunteering a bunch and you're giving so much back to this school district. And Ms. Waters has been doing that for years, not only just for her kids and for her kids' teachers, but for so many other kids. Um, and working, I know she works a lot of stuff with Hickman PTSD, and that impacts not only Hickman students, but it's been impacting so many other folks when it comes to families, as well as other high schools and middle schools. And so I just, that, that is kind of where I see it, is that right now, we need those that have historical knowledge, have the ability and have the want and have already been giving and constantly giving, to continue to give their all and go up above and beyond in this volunteer unpaid position, especially during these really difficult times.
All right, thank you. Um, Kathy, I noticed that Caleb Hall for a long time had his hand up, now it's not up, but, uh...
Uh, he asked, he did ask his question.
Oh, he did, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well.
Okay.
Mister, Mister W A Miller, he has been raising his physical hand.
Oh.
Oh, all right, Wiley?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Willoughby. Um, relative to the, um, uh, political pressures that you mentioned, it is my understanding that, um, it is state legislators around the country that are passing these, uh, draconian, uh, laws, uh, limiting what, uh, teachers can and cannot include in their teaching. Uh, I also believe that that, some of that is happening here in Missouri. Uh, what, if anything, can you as school board members do to impress upon legislators, uh, the need to leave schools alone and allow for freedom of education?
Okay, all right, now, Mr. Willoughby's turn. And what is, yeah, Mr. Willoughby's turn.
Thank you so much for that question. Yes, we're seeing across the country that there is a lot, a slew of legislation that's going into state houses around limiting textbooks, limiting books that are in libraries, limiting curriculum, limiting and/or adding requirements onto our teachers to have to post up curriculum years in advance and not change them at all. And then one of those bills actually is in our state house right now, is this idea that teachers need to post their curriculum before the start of the year so that it's easily accessible to everyone uh, to see and go through this database that Desi is supposed to create. That's what's in this legislation right now. I actually had the unique opportunity to spend about ten minutes, uh, with our Senator Caleb Brown, who's also the Senate Majority Leader, um, with our Superintendent Dr. Yearwood. Um, I did, that, well, that was last week, right, sadly, like right before I started getting some COVID symptoms. Uh, so I had to call their office and say, hey, um, just so you're aware. Um, but it was a good conversation, and one of the biggest things that I said to him, I said, look, when it comes to that bill, my biggest concern is the fact, how are y'all defining curriculum? How are you defining a lesson? How are you defining what are like state, uh, standards? These are things that, if you're not going to define these, we're going to get into the space to where we, our teachers are literally just teaching from a piece of paper with the one line that the statement, like the state curriculum states, you can say this. And like, we're just going to have robots teaching, we're not going to have teachers doing the lessons that are needed to help our students engage. We're not going to see the differentiation for each specific student that's necessary, because if these requirements of having a curriculum up way before the school year even begins, we can't, they can't make adjustments as necessary. I think the other thing, just briefly, I know I'm, I'm short on time, but a lot of the limiting on what can be discussed, especially around, um, race and our history, I think is really detrimental, especially being one that grew up in Alabama. All of our school field trips went to various different sites of the civil rights movement for our social studies work and all of these things. And I do feel like these bills would limit that kind of exposure had I, if, if I was a kid now.
Okay, that was a hefty question, I understand how you find that go over. Um, Ms. Waters?
Yes, I've been tracking some of the legislation, um, for several months. I get an update from the MNEA legislative team, um, about all these bills that are, that have been filed and are, are being heard that would affect education in our district. Um, I, I feel like education is kind of the, the current popular battleground. And so it's, it's popular to throw out a lot of legislation right now that would, you know, curtail the destruction of the American dream in public school and, you know, keep our kids from learning, you know, learning hatred, like all this rhetoric that's going around that is just, is unfounded and, and, and inaccurate, basically. Um, I do want to talk about the Parents' Bill of Rights. Um, that is one that concerns me as a parent. I, of course, I think I should have rights when it comes to my child's education. The thing is, I do, I do have rights. I have not ever felt like my ability to know what my child is being taught has been curtailed. Um, I can get on home access and see all of the curriculum that I need to see. Um, what I do not think is appropriate is for the language in this bill. It says, "A teacher has to give notice to a parent if, in, with two weeks, two weeks' notice, if they plan to talk about anything divisive or controversial." Well, who decides what's divisive or controversial? So, and how does a teacher know two weeks in advance that they might be talking about something that someone might find controversial? And the penalty for that is that the teacher can be sued and the money goes towards vouchers. So it's all a little, you know, there's a, a lot of motivation in there to have legislation that, in reality, is going to funnel money away from public school and put it into the voucher program.
Okay, thank you, all right. Uh, next question.
Um, I'm not seeing any hands raised, icon hands, if, if anyone sees other hands or other hands.
Win, Win Colwell.
Miss Colwell. Yes.
Uh, thank you. I, I actually have a couple of things in mind, I guess one was partially answered. Uh, one that hasn't been dealt with at all is, uh, energy and climate, uh, which has been, um, very important to me over the years. And I would like to know, um, how much attention has been given to energy conservation, to renewable sources uh, and construction of the new school buildings? And, uh, also, if there is an opportunity to work with the city, uh, the climate uh, and adaptation plan, I've been sorry that school people have not been involved in that directly. Uh, enough for carryover to the classes, so you might lighten me on that, please.
All right, um, let's see, this time it's, uh, Ms. Waters first.
I'm sorry, can you, I, I think you're asking, what are we doing to encourage climate awareness, maybe, in students or?
Yeah, that's part of it.
Okay. Um, and as, as far as the, like, the, um, energy conservation in our buildings, I, I'm not, I'm not aware of what's being done from the facilities side, I haven't, I haven't gone into that, uh, but that's something I'm, I look forward to learning about. Um, I do know that we have a marvelous science coordinator in our district that has been working very hard on place-based learning. And, uh, Two Mile Prairie just got some, like, I guess figured out a way to do some ag place-based, so they're going to have, you know, some animals there. There's a nature school south of town where kids can spend the night out in nature. They're learning about plants, they're looking at the stars, they're going fishing and canoeing. And I think, and, you know, and then we have all the Teton's trips and these things that, uh, Mr. Sidleski has been so energetic and providing to all of our students. And I think that is the way we need to get students excited about nature and the environment, and because then they will care about it. If they're playing video games all day, they're not really going to care about who's wasting water and who's saving trees. If they are camping and they're in the water and they're in, looking at the trees and experiencing the beauty of that, it matters more to them. Um, so I'm really excited about all the place-based science learning that is going on. And I think our science departments, district-wide, do a really good job of teaching about climate and about our impact on the climate.
Okay, um, Mr. Willoughby?
No, yeah, so on our physical building structures, whenever we're building new buildings, we're always looking at how we can be the most energy efficient with it, how, how our utilities are going to be built. And so those buildings are, they are designed to be more energy efficient than the last building that's been built. Um, and our, our recent new contract that we have with our, um, Building Facility and Design Group, uh, which is called DLR, DLR Group, they are wonderful folks, they helped build Battle High School. Um, and so they're architects that are going, that really are focused on this idea of making sure that we are being energy efficient, that we are building buildings that are sustainable. When it comes to programming, as Ms. Waters has shared, something that she didn't say, but I will tout, is the Waters family are the ones that donated the land to the Boone County Nature School. Um, and that, that nature school is helping being built, and it's not just for Columbia Public School students, but it's for every Boone County child to take part in. And so those kind of partnerships around the county with all the school districts, with all of our cities, looking at ways to engage our students with our environment, with ecology, with a way to understand the world around us in a very place-based way is highly important, and it's those collaborations and those out-of-the-box thinking that's really, it's going to keep us moving forward as we continue on. Because I think what COVID has really taught us is, we've been pretty siloed, and like, we have our school district, and each school district does its own thing. But I think we've been, I think this moment has really showed us, we need to all collaborate together, and I think we see the strength. I think the Boone County Nature School is a really good thing that points to that. The other thing that we have is, our nutrition services program does composting, has a whole process through that, as well as partners with the, um, Columbia Ag, uh, Urban Agriculture. Um, I'm saying the name wrong there, but especially at West Middle School where the pavilion is for the, um, food marketplace, why am I blanking here? Uh, farmer's market, yes, um, words. And so there's a lot of things happening there for students when it comes to curriculum and growing food and farming.
Okay, I, my clock says it's one oh two, and if I'm, if we're going to have five minutes for each person to wrap up, I think we should let that start now. Uh, and if there are other questions, perhaps people can ask them later. Um, but right now, let's see here, we started out, Mr. Willoughby, we could, uh, give Ms. Waters five minutes to talk about herself, wrap up any questions she didn't feel complete, that sort of thing, so. Uh, it's your turn.
Well, thank you. Um, if anyone has a question for me, I am, you can contact me through my website that I put in the chat, but very simply, it's just Suzette four, number four, schoolboard.com. Um, and there, my email is in there and my landline is in there. Um, yes, I know, I'm old school, I still have a landline. Um, if you would, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to email me. I, I have gotten questions and I try to answer them. So please feel free. Um, I, I wanted, you know, this is not like a super inspiring wrap-up, but I did want to touch on district finances a little bit, because we are coming to a point where our budget is going to be facing some critical, uh, some critical times. Uh, the sales tax with the possible wayfare tax, which I'm in favor of, as leveling the playing field for our local business owners, that's going to increase our sales tax revenue, and fifty percent of our sales tax revenue has to be rolled back from what we take in property taxes. Uh, what goes from property taxes to the school district. So there's a potential for us to not quite have as much in the budget because of that, and then, you know, the Blankenship ruling that just happened. Um, so we're, and then our average daily attendance, we've been able to float on the highest of the past three years. And that has gotten us through the pandemic, but our attendance, our average daily attendance is down because of the pandemic and because of children quarantining and being homesick. And so our, our funding from the state stands to, stands to be decreased by quite a bit um, in future years. And so I think we'll need to work really hard to make sure we maintain funding, because it's barely more than it was in two thousand and five per student, which is not, you know, which is not, not great. Uh, you know, I have a suggestion for the legislature to take that on, if they are so interested in education about that. Um, but in summary, I would just like to say, um, I appreciate, um, Blake's comments about my commitment to Columbia and to the schools. I have been very involved, because that's, you know, I put my energy and my, and my time where my heart is, and my heart has always been in these schools. Um, I am a product of these schools, and I believe in them. I am a product of these schools, and I believe in them. I believe we need to do better in a lot of ways, and I think we can, and I think we will. I am very, I'm honored to have the chance to even talk about my vision for Columbia Public Schools. I'm not coming into this as a stepping stone for any other kind of political office. This is kind of a one-and-done gig for me. But I know, and I'm not coming in with an agenda. I don't have, you know, a burr under my saddle for some, some special interest that I would like to get achieved. And I'm, I'm really coming to this as I know there's work to be done. I'm a hard worker. Let's do this. Let's get this done. And it's because I believe that educating all the children in our community is the most important work we do.
Suzette, is, is your address in your, on your website?
In case someone wants to mail a check to you?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
Right now, Mr. Willoughby?
Yes, thank you all so much for having us today. It's been, it's been great to see y'all and see faces and answer questions. It's been a great conversation. To kind of wrap up on things, I do just want to say, back in 2019, I ran on this idea of wanting to be engaged in our community and give opportunity for that. I ran on this idea of wanting to see improvements when it came to our special education programming and the things that we do with our physical structures with ADA. I also ran on a want to really engage with our students. Two of those three happened. COVID kind of took, kind of took over. But in those eight months before COVID hit in March 2020, I was able to get our bond language changed to, to address and have this 10-year long-range facilities plan towards ADA physical improvements and putting money towards that with our bonds. I was, and throughout the last three years, I have spent over 50-plus hours holding community, open community sessions for folks to come in, talk about agenda items, ask questions, all of that has been given. And that doesn't count one-on-one meetings or meetings that I've been asked to go attend. These are meetings that I've just hosted. So I'm not even counting the other hours that go to this. I'm also still, as I was then, the youngest member of the board and the youngest member running on the, for the board today. I'm also still, from my understanding, the lowest socioeconomic status of anyone on the board and the lowest socioeconomic status anyone running for the board today. I make only $23,000 a year for the last three years. I make less than our teachers do at the minimum base, and I've worked multiple part-time jobs throughout all of this because of COVID. The hard work and all this dedication and all these experiences give me a different perspective than what's on, than other board members. And it has informed many of the decisions that I have made. And it has informed the way that I look at the world and look at how we make these decisions. And that is a part of why I'm thinking and why I want to have this framework and have these conversations with the board around healing. Because in all of my conversations at my part-time jobs, with teachers, with staff, with families, it seems that that's what we're needing. And we have to make decisions that aren't just about healing, because healing is a broad thing. But it's that idea of, as I shared, how do these decisions that we're making facilitate healing? And where I see that most need coming in at is making sure that we are providing quality, equitable educational environments for our students, having a healthy work environment for our staff, and addressing our physical structures to make sure that they're providing the best to our students. And I think through that, we'll be able to provide an educational space that our students feel welcomed, included, and can be inspired in, but also that our community and the families of our students can come into those educational spaces and feel welcomed and included and inspired. And I really do hope that y'all can see that in what I'm wanting to do and the way that I talk about things, and will give me this opportunity to continue to serve on the school board and to continue driving, helping this guide into this direction of healing after these last three years, which have been very difficult for all of us in a lot of ways. So thank you.
Thank you. And well, I'll turn it back over to David Mallory.
Thank you. Pam, you had your hand up before they, before we went to the final, did you still want to do, or did you make your point, or did you have something else you wanted to ask?
You're muted.
You're muted again. You're still muted.
Pam, you're still on mute.
I just wanted to ask Suzette to make her information. I'll, I'll put it in our announcements so it goes.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank everyone for your time, or especially thank our two panelists, Ms. Waters and Mr. Willoughby, and also Leslie Clay. Thank you for moderating. It's always extra tricky when we have a panel to deal with, so appreciate you stepping up and doing that. Thank you very much. Any other last-minute questions for our panelists? Anyone want to, before we close out and move on to our.
I thought I saw Caleb Hall still had a hand up somewhere. Now I don't know where he is.
Carl, oh, that's a clap. The raised hand and the applause.
I'm just applauding, that's all.
And the raised hand, look off a close to bed. All right, just looking over one more time, more applause, good for applause. All right. Okay, well, again, thank you both. I appreciate you being here so much, and good luck to both of you in, in the race, and we'll look forward to hearing more about it and appreciate the information you shared on your websites, so we can all go out there and see how to donate, how to volunteer and help you in the coming race. All right.